You're all set.
Okay, I'll call the Orono Town Council meeting of September 12th or. And Councilor Robertson, Berthel, Larroway, Gardner, and any with us. And we have several agenda adjustments, so let's just identify those before we go any further. Order 22172 consent agenda is being removed, consent agenda, and will be put on your new business. Order 22177, the table has been revised, and you should have a copy of the new table. And order 22183 entirely new gender right regarding a purchase that we don't want to postpone. So there are no objections, we'll make those agenda adjustments. What's up with that?
Yeah. So we need a motion on order 183 being added because it has to be.
So can I have a motion to add order 183 to move seconded by Cheryl? Any discussion? Almost in favor? We are all in favor, great. So moving on to approval of the minutes of August 8th, the last time we were together almost. I hope everybody had a great break. Motion to approve minutes of August 8th, please. Second move, move the second. And any conditions, corrections, or adjustments of that? We never can find anything to correct when we answer that, not to really scour.
That's.
Ready for vote, almost in favor. Right? And moving on to public hearings, public hearing A to consider vigilance license for the following business. Businesses brewers of the naught doing business at Roma Joe 99 Park Street. Max Convenience Store LLC doing business as Circle K number 7089. Fifty three main. Max Convenience Store LLC doing business at Circle K number 701. In Stillwater Avenue, Harvest Moon LLC 18 Mill Street. Big Shoe Incorporated doing business in Subway 53 Main Street. And Big Shoe Incorporated doing business as Subway 10 Stillwater Avenue. And our code enforcement, Mr. Estes is with us. Motion to approve first. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Just going to open the public hearing and then we're going to go to, we can take very specific.
I know it. Hello, everyone, Matt Guest, the code enforcement officer, and I'm also representing police and fire and town clerk. And all inspections have been completed, paperwork is in, and we are recommending approval.
Any public comment? You see anybody on the screen?
Nothing online at this moment.
Thank you, we will close public hearing A. And move on to public hearing B. To consider a marijuana establishment retail store license for Red Brick and Warner DBA Firestorm of Orono. Six Stillwater Avenue Sweet 300.
And inspections have been completed by staff and paperwork is in, and we're recommending approval.
We'll open that public hearing, are there any public comments on that?
No hands raised online.
Well, we'll close public hearing B. Public hearing C to consider an automobile graveyard and junkyard permit. La Point Enterprise Incorporated 201 Kelly Road.
So this has gone through the inspection process. Paperwork is in, and I have spoken with the main DEP about the nonconforming that's going on. It's an ongoing process year to year that we're going to work with them. To remove junkyard items away from the 100 foot mark from the property. So every year I'll go out and see that progress and we'll keep moving forward, so we recommend approval.
Any comments from the public on this item?
I do.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Benjamin Schrader, I live on Kelly Road.
In order for the.
You have to cut the table, okay.
This table here?
Right, right there, let me see this, please.
You have to yell one to the owl.
Okay, and if you could again repeat your name and residence?
Yeah, Benjamin Schrader, I'm at 173. On the application, the it's signed by Michael LaPointe, can we confirm that Michael LaPointe is responsible for the property?
Is the air superior point.
So. Sorry.
Just a second, oh, sorry.
Can I just? So. LaPointe Enterprises is the entity that has applied for a license, it's the same entity that has historically received the license. This property was subject to probate. Process and some civil. Civil lawsuit, civil action. So the town's position is you would not be giving a license to a specific individual. You're giving it to LaPointe Enterprises, who is the historic holder of this license. If the parties have a dispute over who owns LaPointe Enterprises, this is most definitely not the venue. The venue would be to go back through and appeal rulings that have already been handed down before.
Can I address the council? Or can I? Why am I in the much way, which is certainly come up to the table? Yeah. So did to, I might understand that LaPointe Enterprises is who is 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 responsible for the property?
Correct.
Okay, and who owns LaPointe Enterprises?
The estate of Perry LaPointe, is that not correct? Yes.
I checked the state of Maine website, and it says that currently it's in good standing and owned by Daniel LaPointe. Do you have any information to the counter?
Again.
That's my name is Wong.
We are issuing the license to the. LaPointe Enterprises. If there is a dispute about the ownership of LaPointe Enterprises that has historically. Been the holder of this license, this is not the venue to arbitrate that.
How, how is this the? How is the application delivered to LaPointe Enterprises?
The application is not delivered to LaPointe Enterprises. If anything, copy may have been mailed to the last known address. But ultimately, again. This is not the avenue to dispute ownership of LaPointe Enterprises.
I don't know, our guest here is aiming to dispute the ownership. It is the application that we have access to public.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's.
So listed on this, it does say that if it has all to you for your question. It does say that Daniel LaPointe removed Desperado Representative of the State.
Where does it say that?
On the application. Or the, about the application, the pre-approval business checklist that was part of our council meeting materials.
And is the estate applying for the application?
Yes.
Where is the state applying for the application? I did, weren't, wasn't, were we earlier on the understanding that LaPointe Enterprises was applying for the application? Or was it, there was this response?
So I think maybe where I get to, if you have an issue with this application, maybe you could be specific about what your issue is. And perhaps it will be addressed.
Um. Yeah, this past winter I was arrested at the property working. And I have not been able to find anything in writing as to why that is. I had not received anything on the. The. Yeah, and I didn't get any, I didn't get anything ahead of time, I didn't, I was arrested. And, and I was not the, the district attorney declined to prosecute. So I tried to meet with the district attorney and she refused to move with me. So I have no information about my arrest, but I had property that was taken and carried away. Without my authorization, and I had contract administered without right. So I'm wondering how, who do I address that with?
I think you have brought issues that are unrelated to the application for a junkyard license. And I'm not sure where to direct you to get, to get answers to your questions, but I don't.
We don't have anything more, we have this very public document. That is the application for the license that we are discussing, whether or not we're here, we're that we're here, a public comment. We don't have any other information to provide you about that, other than what's publicly available on this document.
So. I have the estate boy is phone number after you're done, I can give you, you're supposed to contact him. And then it's like, if you could wait until we are done the table and it be recorded. Okay, so I think we're at a point where we're discussing a application to run a junkyard. And although you have some very legitimate issues, I'm sure this is not the forum to address. So I'm going to ask you to step back, please, and. Mr. LaPointe, come up here.
May I make one more point, or will there be?
Is it related to the application to run the junkyard?
It is, yes. In that, because it's it's LaPointe Enterprises, and we can verify right now who is the owner currently with the state of Maine. Of LaPointe Enterprises, that's something that is public and available. And, and that is something that that we could confirm at this time.
Thank you. Mr. LaPointe, did you want to talk?
Yes, yes.
And you would identify yourself.
I'm like a little. Good to see you, Tom, I've spent a lot of time today. I don't know anybody else. So what do we do?
You may speak for or against the issuing of the. Right, we have heard from our code enforcement officer was recommending approval. If there's anything that you'd like to add to that discussion, you're welcome to.
Well, I guess introduce myself, I'm, I'm back in town, I left for a long, long time, but I moved, I live in Holden. But I'm taking care of the junkyard, pretty much. Along with my other brothers there, Ben and John. It's a new regime, you know, we're going to be changing things as. Code enforcer already knows. We're doing operation cleanup. We're just changing the way the whole thing is. I know we're grandfathered, you've heard that word many, many times. But there's such a thing as a grandfather, and then we can kind of, if we can, you know, put the rules into the town. Like the hundred foot. That was easy. I did that sketch for you, I don't know if you saw it. It was just a half, I threw it together, but it worked and kind of shows. Where the junkyard is, will it be that, I don't know, could be less, right now I think I did like 50 acres or so. Because I have no, there's no hand up. No baton handed to me saying, this is the way we used to do it, this is the way it goes. We're just kind of winging along, thank goodness for Pat over there. He really helped, you know, get us going, I've been working with the state and. We're working on a plan to fix it, so the state license would be moved this way. So that's going pretty smooth, I just talked to Detective. It was just a couple of hours to get things moving along. We are not doing business presently because of the quiet monitor of the court system, which you're probably well aware. Probate court happened, LaPointe's Enterprises was given to the estate of Perry LaPointe. And that's where it was. So. Yes, that's it, no much, well, I appreciate the information. Any questions, man?
Hey, we're all set.
Thanks, don't.
Then we will. We will close public hearing C. And move on to public hearing D. To consider an automobile graveyard or junkyard for the town of Orono off Taylor Road.
And staff has done their inspections and we are recommending approval.
Any questions from the public? None?
Nothing online.
Close public hearing B and move on to public hearing E to consider an automobile graveyard or junkyard permit for Silver's Bottle Parts Incorporated. 485 Main Street.
And same with Silver's inspections have been completed and we're recommending approval.
And once again, any comments for or against this permit from the public? I was amazed to see they had been in business since 1910. That is unbelievable.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to acknowledgement by council members. And we'll start on my left with Councilor Anderson.
Sure, I'm, I have a couple of things, I just wanted to acknowledge that. University is back in session, and I think we all know that. Everybody's back in school, and I, as far as I know, it's going to have relatively smooth start, so as far as I know. So anyway, welcome back college students, also just to shout out, we are. It's on the sign, and thank you Belle for putting it on the sign. The Orono, our first annual Orono Efficiency Fair is now being advertised, it's October 22nd. We'll be on campus, we'll be at Wells Commons, and we are. We have lots of tables, lots of people tabling, and we're getting ready to kind of rock and roll, so it's been, so it's a good project.
Do you want to just know that that's free?
And it's free. Sure, yeah, and it's free to the public.
Can you, can you describe how vendors get involved or get a table set up? I've seen something on the Facebook post of somebody asking that question.
Yeah, so, so right now, if you contact Megan Hess, our environmental services coordinator, she is coordinating the whole team. She's, we're actually open to more vendors, so we've got a bunch of vendors already, but we're looking for some, we're looking for some more, we're particularly looking for electric vehicles. So we've got a, we've got kind of a gap in that, so we're on the committee, there's a subcommittee, we're working on getting. Some cars, some dealerships, Toyota, Kia, we're not, we're not picky, I'm not, I'm not separating out. Any particular, any particular brand, but yeah, but getting ahold of Megan is the answer to your question, she's the one that's doing the bulk of the organizing.
And if you can't find Megan, contact the town manager's office. She knows where it is. Thank you.
Sure, mine was also the upcoming Energy Efficiency Fair, which, and window dressers too, I guess, and some other.
Thank you.
Of the Environment Committee, so it looks like it's going to be another year when heating costs may be. A challenge for a lot of people, and so I am signing myself up to get some of those window inserts and the town is helping to coordinate that, so. The deadline to sign up is soon, sign up now.
As summer winds down, I want to voice some appreciation for those who, we've got Key West Park in particular, and the Forest Trail, any of the river trails. Great places for recreation for everybody who spends their time here in the summer, I know, I appreciated it, most people, a lot of my circles also really like that as part of the town.
Well, hey, I know we've talked about this a bunch of times, but now that I've seen it I R L. Those signs, wow, like the gateway signs look amazing, I mean, when you drive from any direction, when you're driving into town, they are so bold. They are so like cheerful looking, they're very attractive, very well done, staff did an excellent, excellent job. With the design and execution of those, and you know, and also putting up with us taking so, so long to pick. To pick what are going, sign. But I digress, they're excellent, and I think that, yeah, that, I mean, I'm not, I'm never surprised when staff does a great job, but they, they're particularly striking, I think, when you drive into town.
And Chief Orono is on the signs regardless of what people say, you have to book.
Must be guarding too fast.
You're driving too fast.
I would acknowledge our town planner Kyle Brexler. Only, I had, I had two unsolicited public feedbacks. Just given to me kind of randomly about how great he has been to work with on a couple of different issues and pass that acknowledgement.
And I have a couple of acknowledgements, I would like to acknowledge Gary Robichard, Gary is a former Orono firefighter, who's been retired for many years. But Gary volunteers his time at our cemetery to work on the stones of veterans. Many of them have been sucked into the ground and can hardly be seen, and he does an absolutely amazing job, almost every morning up there volunteering his time to do that. He's done over 150 stones so far, and he's going to keep going until the snow flies, it says. I would also like to acknowledge our employee Trish Davis, who has recently moved from downstairs in the clerk's office to upstairs in the finance office. However, she has just recently received a certification from the state as a certified town clerk, so we're excited that she's reached that milestone. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge our fire department staff for the success they have recently had on some very outstanding brands, and we're really pleased to see that, so. For all of those employees who participated in developing that brand, our congratulations and appreciation. Okay.
Just, just when Kevin's not here.
Move on to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and once again, we have eliminated order 172 from the consent agenda. So move, move and seconded by Cheryl. All votes in favor?
I have a question, is there a way to talk about the individual pieces on that?
Well, to do that, it should be taken off the consent agenda. Any counselor can request that an item be taken off the consent agenda, but. The whole purpose of the consent agenda is to have items that don't need further discussion.
I don't have the numbers, I know, I wanted to have a conversation about Carrie Bowden, which I think is 22177.
That's not on consent, is it? It's in the business.
See, we take too long between meetings. So all those in favor of consent agenda, signify.
So just to be, to make sure, because we have lots of people who are online and in the audience who are here around junkyard licenses or vigilance licenses. Those all passed without condition as part of the consent.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to new business, and the first item on new business is going to be. Order 22172, which we deleted from the consent agenda. And you have a new, we have a new order?
No, you need to talk about the order.
Okay. So the order was to appoint a delegate to the main municipal association, the annual meeting. It requires that the delegate be a elected official or.
Or town staff.
Or town staff. The main municipal association conference is being held in Bangor this year at the cross dinner, it's October 5th and 6th, I believe. Is there anybody, I do plan to attend, but others may also want to attend, and Cheryl is planning to attend. It's a great conference, if you have an opportunity to go to any part of it, it's well worth the time. And it's only in Bangor every other year, so this would be a good year to try to make it.
If there are particular sessions that someone might want to attend, can you guys, I assume you can go, okay. Can anybody, could all of us go?
Oh, if not together, if everybody can go to the conference. Only one delegate represents Orono at their annual meeting, which is actually a very small part of the conference.
Yes, about 40 minutes in the middle of it. The, the reason I put this on here is I hadn't had a chance to connect with Cheryl about whether or not she was actually going. And I am historically the alternate, I'm not going to be able to make the convention this year, I have a, I have another thing I need to be doing, so. The clearly, if I'm not even going to be there, I can't be an alternate.
So you two don't think you're going.
I'm planning to go, and I would be more than happy to serve as your alternate, Cheryl.
Okay.
Nancy registers folks for this, so folks who are thinking of going, is the agenda is in the most recent?
It's in the most recent Townsmen, it's also online, the M A M U N dot org. And you could either register for a day or two, if you think you're going to be in and out, if you really want to think about, do you need a meal or not? So please kind of look at that, it's a little bit different than it's been in previous years. The sooner we know, the better, we want Nancy to register people before the late fees kick in.
When do the late fees kick in?
Uh, no, no, they're.
Usually like a week or so.
Yeah, a couple of weeks before.
So order 22172 on the new business, and order designating Cheryl Robinson as Orono's official voting delegate. And Thomas Perry as the alternate, that's agreed with folks, and could I have a motion to approve in a second on that?
I move to approve.
In a second. Any discussion? All votes in favor? All in favor? Can I just ask, sorry to bog this down, but I only see those items from consent agenda. So see them on the new business, so we, we, you may have committed a little bit late. We removed that item from the consent agenda and placed it under new business at the beginning of the meeting. Okay. Continuing on your new business, order 22176. Order approving a contract zone application for Tyler Technologies Incorporated, located by College Avenue, tax map 19 dash four lot 66. The application proposes to change the zoning district. For the parcel from medium density residential to village commercial with certain restrictions put in place. And Kyle, are you leading us on this one?
Sure. Hi, everyone, Kyle Trexler, town planner, so yeah, this would be the, the final step in the contract zone agreement process. So up to this point, we've had. Planning board public hearing, not only for the contract zone agreement, but site plan approval as well for the project. We've had council public hearing, legal review. So at this point, we are looking for a vote for approval of the contract zone agreement, which, as you said, would. Take what was formerly the university in parcel and rezone it from an M D R district to a village commercial district. Briefly kind of summarize, this allows the applicant to have a conforming commercial office use on the property. The contract sort of outlines a number of restrictions that aim to kind of take into consideration the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Sort of blends those sorts of aesthetics and dimensional requirements, so the project, you know, fits in more in that setting than just a purely commercial setting. Since the last meeting, the applicant reached out with a sort of, on the side, not directly related to the contract, but just with the project itself. You know, as they've gone through the engineering and construction process, looking at things. They're looking at a small roughly thousand square foot reduction to the building, they would actually pull it away from the westerly property line. Which is that closest one to the, the direct residential of others. And we've talked about through with the town attorney, something like that would not have to go back to the planning board, that's something that's staff approved, it's. There's no real new impact to any approvals and everything there. So yeah, at this point. So yeah, a, at this point, we're ready for a council vote and, you know, this would be the final step. Aside from amending the zoning map and having that signed.
So before we gave you further discussion, I did not get a motion to approve this. So have a motion on this and then we'll discuss it. Certainly second. So questions from council members? We, we've certainly had a lot of information on this and as Kyle said, there's been two public hearings. Any questions from council? Any?
I guess just to follow up on some of the feedback we've gotten at the public hearing. What further conversations have there been around a noise barrier or trees or some?
So we haven't had the, well, so one of the planning board conditions of approval was that there'd be a, an increased vegetated buffer along the northern property line where there wasn't really anything there. The applicant has submitted an updated vegetative vegetation plan that adds that kind of new barrier of trees and vegetation along that property line. As far as construction practices, we haven't had a pre-construction meeting as of yet. So that's really when those would be discussed and, you know, we have staff and contractors sit down.
I would say that staff has reached out to the resident who expressed the, the concern around construction practices. They've gone back and forth in email. I think staff has a really good idea of what the issues are and what to bring up during the pre-construction meeting, but also have identified that individual as somebody that the contractor should be kind of checking in with throughout the process.
Great. Thanks for answering that question and it's good to hear the first good communication on this happening, residents.
Yeah. So before any building permits are, are full, that pre-construction meeting happens and everyone sits down and talks this through.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Just a quick comment that, you know, it's always sad when a local business that's been around for a long time no longer exists, but you know, this, this building and the company behind it just seem like they're really good fit to the town. And I'm really excited to see this project continue.
Any public comments? The audience, and none from the internet. We're ready for a vote on this motion. All those in favor? And none opposed? Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Okay, order twenty-two, one seventy-seven, order authorizing the carry forward of funds from balance of the FY twenty-two municipal budget into FY twenty-three. The complete projects identified in FY twenty-two. The table of proposed carry forward balances is to be provided. A motion to approve, please.
Second.
Second.
All right. So this will be the third and final time that we're going through this process. Unlike other businesses in the public sector, especially with our general fund, any expenses that have lapsed in the prior year go to fund balance unless council kind of collects them and designates them for a different purpose. So what we have in this list are three projects that are proposed by staff and one that is identified for council based on the priorities that we hear from council. The first, we are proposing the, the library had a thousand dollars left over in their training budget from last year and that was because identified training was postponed. We have new people working in the library that need the training and so we'd like to carry that money forward. The Parks and Rec Scholarship Fund from last year. Me, we'd like to carry that forward so that we have it this year. We're getting applications for people who are wanting to be in the after school program. So it makes sense for us not to necessarily put it in the reserve to then have to come to you and ask you to take it out on a piecemeal basis, but rather to fund, put more money in the Rex Fellowship Fund. And that is a direct carry forward from last year. So that account had a thousand dollars left in it and we are proposing to that one thousand dollars. The number four, which is in the new table. I discovered this, this morning that in my race to get the agenda out to you and the background out, I had inadvertently left off the remaining balance in the fire chief purchase. So the fire chief, the fire chief vehicle purchase. So last in FY twenty-two, we purchased a truck for the fire chief, the deputy fire chief. The intent all along has been to not only purchase the truck, but outfit it. There was fifteen hundred dollars left in that account to outfit it. I am, we attempted to buy things. Things are backordered. Things are slow. I am proposing that we roll that into next year and we'll put it in probably the operating budget at that amount under new, under equipment so that they can outfit that, the vehicle, finish what they're doing. So there's radios, lettering and some accessory for the back for, to be able to store go bags and stuff. Remain. So that is mine.
Did you?
And I've skipped that. Item three. So one, two and four are direct requests based on operations and moving forward. Item three is looking at priorities and seeing the balance that we currently have unexpended in the budget. One of the priorities that we heard about last year through the DEI work was the idea that we needed to look at, evaluate parking for accessibility and compliance with ADA. So what we are suggesting is staff thinks that we're complying with ADA best based on the information we've been given and taught. So asking staff to look at that again doesn't really make a lot of sense. Instead, it would make sense to get an evaluator up here to evaluate our parking and give us an assessment of our ADA compliance. That's a piece of this. The other piece of this, and what we would end up with is an inventory of our parking spaces and a map that can be a layer on our public access, for public access. The other piece of this is we've gone back and forth and thought about green space between margaritas and what is now the bare blue or nineteen Mill Street, that alleyway. So there are some boundary issues there that we need a survey to be able to settle on the other side. We've got the survey on the nineteen Mill Street side. It's on the margarita side that we would need a survey. We also, given the way the traffic flows in the Mill Street parking lot, we have some questions about conceptually, would it work to not just reconfigure the alleyway, but kind of look out a little bit more? And that might require us to have some change to spaces in Pine Street lot. The other thing that this brings up, and so we'd like to look at mapping where our actual underground services are, where the boundary lines are, but also some conceptual renderings for the town council to look at two things. We've always kind of limited ourselves to the Mill Street, just that alleyway, kind of like the square. And we've done things like in previous renderings that Belle has put together, which have been cool, but we've looked at, like, we don't want just picnic tables or things that can get thrown around or moved and used as whatever. We want things that are kind of settled in there and we want a safe path for people to kind of get through. But there's been an awful lot of conversation at council and in various forums with residents about wanting to increase green space downstairs, downtown. There's been conversation with business owners that have bought the Pine Street parking lot about it would be really nice if we could have outdoor space. There's been a lot of conversation about how it would be really nice if our downtown area around the Pine Street parking lot was more aesthetically pleasing. There has been a lot of conversation about whether or not we're prioritizing the parking spaces for vehicles that we really don't want people to be driving. And whether or not we should be creating more of a green space in the downtown area. So when this last came up, I wish Jeff Wingard was here because he, he was the big proponent for looking into this. But when this last came up, we had a I lost count. We had a capstone group looking at that green space area and what we could do. They kind of went in a different direction with it that didn't really answer this particular question. But I think it's worth having a greater conversation that quite honestly, we could all kind of throw pictures around and mark stuff up, but it would be very helpful to understand the engineering behind it, the places of that parking lot that are no go for things on top of, to really kind of dig down and give council a better understanding of the potential of what we could do with that space so that the town council could decide how it wants to balance green space and parking spaces in that downtown, downtown room. Because if the goal is ultimately, don't lose parking place, that's going to be pretty hard to do. If the goal is to make it more attractive and friendly to outdoor, then there are some things we could do. And the parking spaces that are there, seven. I mean, it's only going to lose seven parking spaces. There's not that many in between Mill Street, I mean, in between Pine Street and Mill Street, right? About seven, depends on the time you have.
Yeah. If I can inject seven, it's quite a lot.
Yeah, I think so.
Money lots. I mean, if you add it every year, it's not, it's pretty. I think you're better than they are.
It's not, I mean, even if you just took those, it would be. Well, we've got the lots over here. Yeah, we've got the lots back here. But even if you took those, the back of the envelope sketches that we've done, you pick up more because you add curb on on Mill Street again. But you, I think, I think the net was two during the winter and a game, I think, one during the summer season when we have already given up spaces. My, one of my questions would be is, the domain, I only have one, is the buried infrastructure, is it, it's under private property, right? So that isn't going to change. So the, the issue, the issue we have here, right, is you've got some buried infrastructure that is public, some on our property, some over on nineteen Mill Street. Right. You've got service lines coming out. I would really hate to create a green space and not understand where everybody's buried infrastructure was because just imagine if we got that beautiful curved bench seating that I want to kind of come up against the walkway with the, you know, solar lights embedded so everybody can see where they're walking and have to rip that up. Yeah, no, that, that was my question. Yeah, I, I think that this is a good direction to go and just to get a consultant to, to really look at that. And before we can use that space for anything other than traffic, we have to clear up some legal issues there. So even like there is the whole idea, do the fail fast, fail cheap, where you don't really build infrastructure where you kind of lock things out. And I will say, having gone to many towns in Maine who have done that, it, I don't know that it's aesthetically pleasing and it doesn't net green space, which has been kind of the mantra I've been hearing. But when you do that, we are no longer using any place that we have garnered through prescriptive right for travel, which means we are violating the boundaries of public property.
This, well, I guess first off, I'll say that I am very excited to consider options for more green space downtown. But my question is more maybe semantic. What, this is in the carry forward requests and I'm curious, like, where is the money for it coming from? Is it from last year's budgets that's being carried forward?
Yeah. So it's from unexpended funds in last year's budget that otherwise would lapse, which is why I didn't, normally when I do carry forwards, it is, here is the, here's what staff needs. Here are projects that perhaps we identified having planning, but didn't get a chance to expend the funds for. Where we all used to love to call those payables. They're not because the service wasn't rendered in the previous year. I specifically highlighted this because what I'm saying is here's a priority I have heard from council. We have never identified specifically the funding for it. Here is a, a place where we have additional funds that are going to lapse to fund balance. Of all the requests we've made, this is the only one of a new project. But I wanted to bring it forward.
And when you say that funds will lapse, what does that mean? Does that mean they disappear from the town's coffers or does, okay, that it's the allocation that they have been designated for, has expired?
It expires and it goes back. They lapse into the undesignated funds.
Okay.
We have not historically been an entity that makes direct appropriations out of undesigned funded funds unless it is an emergency. Like, we need to drill a well for somebody. I think it's the only time we've done that in my tenure.
Other questions or comments on this order?
I guess I've comments on, I appreciate, I mean, these are, these are two different, two different things, kind of. And I wrapped them into one. I don't know where the twenty thousand is divided with regards to inventory on our parking and ADA spaces. I'm happy to hear, because that I could see being a priority, more of a priority. Although hearing what you just said, that we, we believe we are where we need to be. I wonder if, if, if this has risen to the level of we need an outside source to validate that or if we just, we validate that and, and inventory our own parking. We don't, we don't have that much parking in, in the town. We have actually pretty good GIS maps and all that stuff. So that, I don't know what we, of that twenty, we spend on that, but that to me seems like something that we feel like we're where we need to be. We just document it and call it good, you know, or, or it's not good. And then we, we remedy it. That doesn't seem that complex to remedy. We're missing two spots. Here's two spots.
So I am responding to feedback I have gotten from the town council and from the DEI subcommittee when it reported back to the town council and what the town council thought was legitimate and what they, so.
I, I appreciate that, that because they had that concern doesn't mean it's real. No, no disrespect, but I mean, we can think lots of things. We can think that car coming down the street is doing fifty miles an hour, but turns out they're actually doing twenty-five. So I appreciate that. And, but I'm just saying, I wonder if we saw, if we could solve that another way with, with what we kind of feel like we are now.
So to respond to that, Leo, in carrying forward funds, it would otherwise lapse to fund balance. In order to access these funds, it has to come back to council with the scope of work. We haven't gone that far because it isn't a council priority, you know, and you haven't allocated the funds for us to go out and and scope this out. This is, hey, here's an opportunity for us to address what staff has heard is priority. If it's not priority and you'd like to let it go, we can absolutely do that. However, you know, ultimately we have to come back to council with a scope, a project, deliverables and a price. And you all get to decide whether you want to expand.
So we'll have another opportunity to look at the final price tag of what, what a scope of work would be for consultants to approve or to, to set the accessible parking spaces.
So this is just making sure that So this is just making sure that saying to us in doing this, what you're saying is this is important enough for you, Sophie, and you, Rob. And you have S Ds to go forth and work with a consultant to develop a scope of work and bring that back. If you don't approve it, we have no other money in the budget for this, so it would have to sit and wait.
So it's uh, I think, uh, a good exploratory step. Um again, we're not committing to spend like to doing a specific thing tonight, but I do think that this. Sort of kills two birds with one stone. Uh these are two priorities that we. And by saying we, I'm acknowledging this is a, a previous council, although the majority of voting members, I believe, on this current council also identified these as priorities. Um you know, as, as, as priorities that we wanted to be able to look into and to fund, but we did not identify funds for. Because we had to make tough decisions, like we do every year in a budget, but I think this presents us with a really good opportunity. To do some exploration into two council priorities. Um and to the, you know, to the point of, of the DEI committee's recommendations and. You know, I mean, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, the whole purpose of a DEI committee is because. You need other people to show you what, what your privilege blinds you to. So if you have a committee that says look into ADA sensibility. You say, you know what, maybe, maybe there's something we can learn, which is what I hear Sophie saying, and so I, I'm very supportive of. Of always kind of.
My privilege did not blind me to number of parking spaces that are.
I'm not necessarily saying, it's not just.
I thought it is what you said, but I mean, my, my point is.
Do, do you know how the number of spaces and where they're located? You know, we, I, this isn't like, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pick a bone with you, but what I'm saying is that. When you say, um you know, just that they said that, I mean, I, for me, I want to always be very clear with the mission of this committee and the ad hoc that preceded it. That the purpose of that is to perhaps nudge us in directions where we might think we know the answer, but maybe we don't. And so we can look for outside sources to help us perhaps find out that we're doing well, or perhaps find out that we can make improvements, and I think this is a very good step.
My point is that I, I think our council is, I mean, not our council. Our staff is capable of that. I think there are probably clear guidelines. We know the number of spaces and we do various, I mean, this, this feels like a fairly rudimentary task to me. That, that there is, there are standards and that's not probably hard to do, and so now we, we, we're quick to hire an expert to come and tell us. Something where we actually have that expertise and probably could accomplish it. That was my point to them.
Yep, and maybe we'll learn something, so that would be with you.
For the discussion on the site.
I would just wanna say, just for me, the green space between um Pine Street and Mill Street have been. Something that we've talked about for years and I'm, I'm an advocate for it and think that it's gonna be, I think it will be um. Uh it will improve our downtown, but it's pretty complex. And so I would trust a consultant to come in and say what, what we need to do. I don't know how, Leo, it breaks down into. The parking spaces and then the green space, cause it is, does to me also feel like it's kind of two issues. Um so, um but if it's, if it is a, if it is one, if it is a one consultant. For two issues, then that to me sounds like it's cost of gravity. To, to just kind of.
Well, I, you, you bring up another, I think, very good point in, in that, that it, it is complex.
Yeah.
And. I am almost feel that that's better handled. By the town, we could, unless we're looking to bring an expert in. To tell our businesses and to tell community members how this, how this should be, and, and there's really a lot that, like. The, the starting point is that, does it make sense? And.
Right.
There are lots of perspectives.
I, I don't think I'm qualified to make that decision now without somebody kind of going through the process. Not just the process, but the process, the infrastructure, the public, the private, the, you know, the boundaries, the this, the that, there's. It's just, there's so much to it that I would rely on somebody who knew what they were talking about. To help me advise, and we may decide we can't do it. I mean, there, it may come to a point, it may come to that, but I don't feel confident enough in my own. Understanding of how all of this stuff kind of juxtaposes and fits together. So I would appreciate having an outside voice kind of coming in. Up consultants, we hire consultants. Everybody hires consultants to tell us what to do.
Fortunately, we only have to decide whether we're willing to explore it.
Exactly. Exactly.
Rob is showing us, and I, I wonder if there's anything he'd like to add to this discussion or. If there's information that he thinks.
Well, just quickly, I, I think um the idea to, to bring the consultant in would be. Um that initial inventory, uh Leo's right, would be relatively quick and easy, but it would provide the foundation. For further analysis as we start to look at. Um perhaps reconfiguring things in the alleyway area, how can we, do, do spots need to move, you know, all that sort of work. Um the survey and all that will, would come with a consultant anyways, and this is something that. A single consultant should be able to do under one agreement. Um so I, I too think uh. Some of the easier stuff will go quickly and we'll, we'll have an, you know, an agreement with a consultant to move. Either on an hourly basis or on a task by task basis, so we can take a look at those things and see if it makes sense, once we get the scope of work taken care of. Um the other thing I would say is, is just a straight, just timing wise. Um when I look at resources and, and, and what we have in public safety, you know, in uh. Public safety, code enforcement and public works, we don't have a lot of free time, so um bringing a consultant on may. Help us move through the process a little bit quicker than um trying to attempt it in-house.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion on the site? Ready for vote? All votes in favor? And opposed? One opposed? Thank you. Okay, we are on order twenty-two dash one seventy-eight, I do believe, unless I've lost track. And order twenty-two dash one seventy-eight is an order approving the designation. Of FY twenty-two year and assigned balances. Motion, have a motion on that, please. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, Cheryl, did you hand up? I think you did.
I second you.
Yeah. Sophie.
So where we talked in the last order about capturing un, unexpended parts of the FY twenty-two expense budget. Now we're talking about the assignment of the full um of fund balance. So fund balance is broken into four components. Don't get this wrong, but um we have the unspendable portion, which um is made up of our. Inventory of gas and diesel that is onsite, that's an asset that. We have pre-ordered, but can't expend it. Um restricted, which means they are funds within our possession that um are. Um the expend, expenditure of that is restricted by some body outside of town council, so. Grant funds would be part of our restricted fund balance, or in um the general fund, we, we don't carry um. Grant funds or hazmat funds in the general fund, so they're coming separate. Um but it also includes uh the tax increment financing district funds. Um there is the unassigned um fund balance, which are cash and other um. Other forms of payment um that are um. Not assigned for a particular use. Having said that. Um the town is required um under our agreements for bonding and other areas to have a certain amount of fund balance, and I think we. Kind of touched on that during the budget process. Um the last area. That we have is the assigned fund balance. In most years, I don't even bother to bring this to your attention. Because uh we have historically simply, council creates the list of. Of um reserve accounts or things it wants to save money for in the future uh for future purchases. Or in some cases donations, like the skate park is donated funds that we simply hold in an account. Um but those reserves, um money comes in and money flows out. Um town council makes all the decisions for how money flows in the um assigned fund balance. This year, so normally we just have the historic list of reserves. And we might ask if you wanna add a reserve or, or delete a reserve. But we just take the activity within those reserves through the year and capture the ending balance, which then shows up on the A three. Which is exhibit A three to the um annual financial statement. This year, I am suggesting that we make a couple of changes, and so I thought the best way to look at these was simply to give you what would show up. As the assigned um uh list and how I would propose to change it. The, the first thing is we had um, we had approved the um. Community building facilities evaluation process that we, that is underway. When we did that, we knew we were gonna be a little bit short. In the professional development account, which we, is where we set money aside for that. Instead of appropriating new money for those dollars through the budget, we knew we were gonna have interest on the tips, which is simply allocated into its own. Um piece of the, the, the fund and um. The police technology reserve, which we no longer really need because we've come up with a new. Way of funding those technology investments through um the operating budget, so they're um. Supported either through leases or um annual um payments over time, um so we don't need those funds. So my suggestion is that we collapse and allocate the interest on reserves and the police technology reserve. Into the professional development line, which at the end of the year, that should be spent out and that reserve should go away, which was the intent when. Council created that reserve. The other thing that is very confusing, not only to some counselors, but who read the annual um financial statements, but to staff. Is uh we have the um leftover allocation from the public works garage project. And we also have our ongoing um public works um facility maintenance reserve. Um and those are two different pots of money. We are suggesting that we collapse those into one. Knowing that next year, we're gonna be spending a chunk of that to seal the block um on that building, so. Um when you do need to maintain this building, it's expensive, so it's important that we have those funds. But instead of carrying them in two different reserves, it would be very helpful to collapse them. So when we just look at the um. The. Activity in these reserves from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we um have a balance of. Uh one million, seven hundred fifty-two dollars, nine hundred seventy-six. I'm sorry, one million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars. When we look at the proposed adjustments, they also equal one million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars. So we're not suggesting you are assigning more, we're suggesting that we relocate what has previously been signed.
Thanks, Sophie. Questions on that?
It seems very logical to me. A couple of questions, could you run? Remind me, what's, what do we have in the designated?
What changes year to year? Um last year, we had. Total fund balance of eight, eight point six million, three point. Two, I think, in the undesigned, give me just a second. So don't listen to what I'm saying. Let me. I, I don't, I don't do math, like. Find it. You continue on, I'll answer.
I just, I was curious about that. Um also, the, the forty thousand that's in their reserve account that we're moving over. Has that always been there since that building was built, or is that something that we've taken out along the year through the years?
So that actually started out at a little over five hundred thousand dollars. That was used towards the, the garage project. Um when we borrowed the funds, the allocation was a little bit different, so there was money remaining. Um and I think the intent of that money has always been to use it. Number one, if there were things when the building was built that were overlooked or needed to be adjusted, it was for that. Um and now for maintenance, and I think there are a couple of elements of maintenance that are coming up. The building's been there for. Five, six years at this point. Um we have the, the biggest one that we've just, I, that we identified two years ago. Was having to seal the, the block on the side, which is, um Rob can speak to it, but it's a little over twenty thousand dollars when we had it.
And, and on the um, the general maintenance board that building, looks like we're adding ten grand this year to do that from twenty to thirty. Where does that normally, but what's the target? Do we have a target there and where does that normally sit?
So we have added ten thousand dollars a year. Um we haven't gotten comfortable enough with it yet to add the target, just simply because. We know that there are some pieces um of the systems that are gonna need. To be addressed. So when we talked with um. The engineer, when we were going through the process, we think. The staff's internal place where we would come to council and say, I don't think we need to add to this anymore, would probably be. When that totaled like one hundred fifty or two hundred thousand dollars. Um but there are. When things break in that building, Leo, they are very expensive, and there's the whole geothermal.
Some time ago, some years ago, when we're talking about some new facilities, the town, the town council was very. Um adamant about making sure we had some reserves set aside to maintain those facilities, so we didn't let them. Um deteriorate and say we couldn't do it because we didn't have the money to do it.
It looks like that is kept up, so this would be a, a pretty good shot in non-Dell, more than Dell, what we have there. Help us get to, yes, but maybe where we can.
Yeah. So just to go back to your initial question, it wasn't that far off. Uh we had three point um, three million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars in total unassigned. Fund balance of eight million, seven hundred eleven thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars.
Three, now we're one point seven, still we say we have around three, how does that matter?
So there's um restricted funds, which I didn't give you over, um which are last year. Um yeah, um last year was a little over three million plus, we have another six hundred. And sixty-three restricted. So if you look, Leo, um the audit report that's online, if you look in at page forty-four and forty-five. Oh wait, yeah, forty-three and forty-four, so.
So we can come back to the order on the floor. Are there any further questions on this order? Set to vote? All in favor? Order twenty-two, one seventy-nine, order authorizing the town manager to purchase six portable radios. And related accessory parts for the order fire department at a cost not to exceed six thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars from R and C communications. In Portland, Maine, funded through Maine Emergency Management Agency FEMA, FY twenty. And FY twenty-one hazard hazmat reimbursement funds. Motion to approve?
Move it through, second.
Seconded.
So um as council may recall, when we went, from when we went through the budget process. The town does operate a regional hazmat um response uh team. That team is um funded through donations from Penobscot County, the University of Maine. And in-kind contributions from the town of Orano and oversight from the town of Orano. And each year, we are allocated fifteen thousand dollars. And each year, we are allocated fifteen thousand dollars from the Maine Emergency Management Agency. To reimburse the town for approved expenses. So before we want to buy something from that money, we go through this process of getting it approved. Because quite honestly, the rules change, so we never want to buy something that doesn't get approved. Each year, you give permission for us to spend those funds. The state works on a different calendar than we do, so we're actually working on two thousand twenty funds. That are just getting done with this purchase, just starting in to use two thousand twenty-one funds. And then you've approved two thousand twenty-two. So you approve the use of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, they just don't get spent on our calendar. So these are radios that are part of our priority that we also discussed during the budget process. The Kevin has made a very good argument to the state that six of our radios need to be funded for hazmat. So the, because this is over five thousand dollars, it needs to come to council for approval. I know nothing about radios, which is why Kevin is right here, Deputy Chief.
So the radios that we're looking at, they are Kenwood's, it's what are on the buyer's side that we've gone to. So we also have the programming for it, so we're able to program it ourselves. These radios will be used during the hazardous material responses. They are a lot newer with their technology than what is currently in place. Our six, our eight radios are actually quite a bit outdated there, let's see.
Very old.
Very old. I had it on here. So we're looking to replace those for a better communication interoperability. With with our current radio. These are handheld, handheld ports, yeah. They'll be used underneath our hazmat suits and they also, we were able to integrate them to our current push-to-talk. So they are hooked to our SCBA mask, so that was, we were able to work with that company.
The reason that interoperability is so important with the fire department is very rarely are they on an incident scene as the only. Responding agency. So we're trying to all get in line with what Penobscot County is running. These will also help us when we go to scenes outside of Penobscot County, because they're newer and can connect. Yeah, I was just going to ask, I remember we had the police radio. Have talked about how they weren't necessarily working. So that's good to know that these ones will work. So the other thing I just want to highlight from the finance side is we are recommending this as a sole source. The reason for that, Penobscot County went through an extensive bidding process, they have awarded a vendor. It is really important that we're using the same vendor, or else we'll get the historic argument, it's yours, it's mine, it's. And so we really want to stay in line with with that vendor.
Makes sense. Questions or comments? Ready for vote? All in favor? And then opposed. Okay, thank you, Kevin, thank you. Order twenty-two, one eighty, order accepting grant funds for Maine Forest Service invasive plant management program. To create invasive plant control practice plan for the coal burn lot in the amount of three hundred dollars. With the matching funds of three hundred dollars to be drawn from the public works operating budget. Motion to approve. Sonia, and a second, second, Rod.
Yeah, so back in. In the spring, Megan Hess, our environmental services coordinator, and I worked with the tree board and the land trust to apply for this grant. It's a total cost of six hundred dollars from legacy woodland services. And three hundred of that will be covered by the grant funds to develop an invasive plant management plan. For the Colburn lot that will be specific to that lot. Maine Forest Service makes these grants available annually, so we'll see how this one goes and maybe apply for another one next season for a different lot.
Thank you, Rob. Questions or comments?
Where is the Colburn lot?
Location of the Colburn lot was the question, Rob.
So that's a big town-owned lot that nestled in between Forest Avenue and Winter Haven Drive. Bennett Road. You can walk from the trail system. From Winter Haven Drive, you can walk onto the Colburn lot and end up bounded by the interstate. And over by Forest Hill Terrace.
And thank you, Rob. That's a concert lot, correct, Rob?
Well, the the lot that the plan will be for is the town-owned lot.
That abuts the concert block?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments on this? That was like a good deal to me. Ready for vote? All in favor? All in favor? Order twenty-two dash one eighty-one, order authorizing the town manager to apply for an efficiency main grant. Of up to twenty-four thousand dollars to install two pedestal level two L two electric vehicle charging stations. With two plugs each, with the town's required match provided through in-kind services. And approved FY twenty-three capital infrastructure miscellaneous electrical project funds estimated to be in three thousand dollars. And further authorize the town manager to accept and extend said funds in accordance with grant requirements if awarded. And a second. I think this is.
Yeah, so you may have seen on the news recently that Efficiency Maine has made funds available for rural communities to expand. EV charging infrastructure and the town of Orono qualifies for this program. So we are able to charge, one pedestal will charge two vehicles. There's actually bonus funding for. For locations at public library locations. So we're going to propose to put one of those pedestals there, so we'll be able to charge two cars at the library. And then we've chosen. An area behind the town office in the public safety building for another location, another pedestal. That will also be able to charge two cars, they're level two chargers. And they will be able to, they will be available to the public. We'll have to come back if awarded and discuss what town council would like the rules associated with those. Pedestals and charger stations need to be, but either way, the the grant requires that they are available to the public all the time. So both of those locations, whichever ones, wherever we pick, will need to be open to the public twenty-four seven. So we have to talk about how the parking ban and stuff like that is going to work with those. But yes, great opportunity. So what, the way it works out. If our in-kind ser- services come in, where I think they will, we'll only be spending about fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. In cash.
Questions or comments? Are those?
Maybe this is where you talk, well, we have to decide after, but would those be metered in people that publicly uses them pays the bill? Or is that something that the town gives the bill?
The the intent from our side is that they would be metered and people would pay the bill for that.
So the, whatever we're putting in has that capability, obviously.
Yeah, so there'll be a dedicated circuit to that, that will, the 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 charging station itself, yes, will allow for. Us to be able to meter when it gets used, how it gets used, we'll be able to charge a fee, all those sorts of things. So how much we charge and and how long we allow charging to occur and all that will be a part of the rules discussion that we'll have to have.
You know more about it? Good question. Any other comments or questions? Ready for vote? All those in favor? All in favor and not opposed? Order twenty-two, one eighty-two. Order authorizing the town manager to apply for up to fifty thousand dollars in state of Maine climate action grant funds round two. To fund expenses related to phase two of the Penobscot Regional Climate Action Planning Project. And further authorize the town manager to accept and expand said funds in accordance with grant requirements if awarded. Is that you?
It's a motion and a second.
Yeah. Motion, I saw in his second.
Second. I'm going to start by saying that late this afternoon, I have just been informed. The city of Bangor, Town of Orono Planning Group for the Regional Climate Action Plan. Actually wanted change kind of where they were able to talk about the second round of funding. And would very much like Orono to join with Bangor and perhaps another entity in the region to apply for the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar. No? Yes? One.
Just Bangor.
Alright, so just Bangor or Orono to apply for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar regional grant instead. So if you are in agreement with that, it would mean that we would just need to amend this. To apply, to say, to apply with the city of Bangor for a hundred, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and the rest of it would be fine.
So, let's see. But I have a motion to amend order twenty-two, one eighty-two. To indicate that we would be applying with the city of Bangor for an amount up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Second. Discussion on the amendment. And we will vote on the amendment and then we will vote on the amended motion. So all in favor of the amendment?
I'm I'm sure. I I'm limited here, so what what this would change about our portion of the sponsor? Would that mean that we're creating more funds and what was that change about the projects?
So Belle, do you want to take that or you want me to give it a step?
Sure, I think what I heard, he's curious about how it changes the funding of the project.
Our portion.
And our portion. So. I'm going to, I'll start a little bit with some of the background on this project, because it's important for my answer. So I I'm afraid I'm going to go around the bush to get to your question. So way back in March, we applied for the first round of. The Community Resilience Grant Funding, and we put in for twenty thousand dollars for phase one of the regional climate. Assessment and Adaptation Plan. That we hadn't yet opened the bid when we put in our application. We just suspected based on the. Quality of the responses that they were going to be above our initial estimate for both phase one and phase two. We are completing phase one and now we're moving into phase two. So phase two talks about, does a lot of community outreach. There's to kind of get the community needs assessment and priorities. And if you are one of the funding members of the project, you get personalized. Recommendations in terms of what climate adaptation strategies you might use in your community. That are most likely to reduce greenhouse gases in your community. So that's phase two. We knew that our plan all along was to apply for the fifty thousand dollars for phase two. The state of Maine originally had a rule that if you made a joint application for a regional project. That regional project could only receive a hundred thousand dollars regardless of how many partners you had. In your. Your project. The rules were recently amended to increase to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Which is good news, because we actually had a twenty-five thousand dollar gap. Because the original project came through at a, or that. The bid came through at a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for phase two of this assessment. By applying with Bangor, we're able to actually leverage additional funding. That wouldn't necessarily be available to us if we apply it as a slow applicant. The state of Maine also indicated to us that they would not look favorably upon the applications. If there were multiple applications coming in that had the same project. Even if it was individual outcomes that were coming out. So, you know, Bangor will get kind of a different report and different community outreach that than Orono will get. But then the urbanized area as a whole. The Bangor, greater Bangor urbanized area will get a report that kind of. Lumps in some of the smaller communities with information that they might use in terms of, you know, how. Changing policies around municipal buildings or energy use, et cetera, might help reduce their greenhouse gases. Whereas Orono will get very specific, if you do this, you can expect this.
So the other thing I'm going to, just to answer your question, only one entity can be responsible for the money. And so if we do a joint application, I I would, I would offer Bangor up to be responsible. For all of the grant administration and also we are getting close, we're doing a great job bringing grant money in. But that, if we hit that five hundred thousand dollar threshold. That adds another six thousand dollars to our audit cost, because we have to do a single item. So if I can still get the benefit of the dollars and shed the impact of them administratively. I think that that's also a smart thing. So more money, less responsibility, seems like a win.
Can, can you clarify, Belle, you said it was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, was that the regional phase two or was that Orono based in? Okay.
That's the regional phase two.
Okay, and as it were prior to five minutes ago or today, we were going to apply for. Fifty and Bangor was going to apply for fifty, and now we can come.
So we were going to apply for fifty, Bangor had funds appropriated through their budget. And then. We were looking at, we were looking at that shortfall of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And then by having Bangor apply with us, that. Increases the amount of money available for the project. Bangor was initially not going to make an application this round until we realized how short the whole funding structure was.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Belle, I have a question for you and I, I may, I may know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Does the University of Maine, I know that they're a partner, are are they counted in our Orono assessment? Or are they different?
So for like the greenhouse gas emissions and the baseline assessment, the University of Maine is part of Orono. For the climate mitigation strategies, they're very focused on making sure that they recommend things. That are actually within the town of Orono's sphere of influence. So the university has an outsized effect on our greenhouse gas emissions. But the town of Orono municipal officials have very little effect on how the university makes decisions. However, the University of Maine being a partner, this is one of the tools that they have been looking to build and develop. And they are very likely to um. You know, kind of take this information and use it in their future planning as well.
Thank you Belle. And just to clarify as a part, I mean, they have um a representative representing the University of Maine. That serves on the steering committee um for this project.
Any other questions or comments? Nothing from the public, I would say. Um. Ready for vote? On the amended motion. All in favor. All favor and not opposed. And we're gonna move on to order twenty-two, one eighty-three, which is a new addition and you should have gotten this in a single page. Uh, tonight. Order authorizing the purchase of UV lamps from UV superstore to the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. And further authorizing the purchase of additional replacement bulbs. Up to one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Not to exceed a total budget amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. As approved in the FY twenty-two WPCF capital budget. With funds drawn from the WPCF Capital Reserve Account. Move approval in second.
Second.
Thank you, and Mr. Pro was here, tell us about it.
Yeah, so, uh, Chris Pro, representing WPCF.
Chris, I think you gotta speak up a little bit so we see.
Get in the album.
Shout at it.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we have two, two bags of disinfection lamps, uh, we only need one for proper disinfection. Everything we have, we have two on backup. So you authorized a set earlier this year from last year's budget. And this is the second set, so we'll replace both sets after this disinfection season and. Be back here again in about seven years.
And we hope that you discover that.
I'm gonna work beyond my retirement for that.
We can make that. People into that.
Any questions for Chris or comments about this purchase? This is where you're straightforward.
If I remember correctly, this purchase is a little bit cheaper than the last one.
It's exactly.
It's a, it's a year of purchase.
As well, yeah. They held it, but they were the lowest.
Ready for vote? All those in favor? And not opposed, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging on to the board.
Okay, now we have. Perhaps, we have met for so long, maybe we don't have many reports. Uh, any council committee or representative reports?
Yeah, we met. Um. Uh, we did not too, we took, we took a while off. Um, so the environment committee met, um, I'm just gonna wing this because we mostly. Talked about the Energy Efficiency Fair and window dressers and the status and the progress that that was making and Megan. Has, um, uh. Did most of the updates, Megan and Belle did most of the updates. Um, I do wanna, and we did kind of talk a little bit about um having council. So the Energy Efficiency Fair is a town. Um, it's a town sponsored event. So I would like to throw out that, that, that council. Attend or be part of this event, even though if you're not, you're not on the environment committee. But it would be nice to see council faces there, um, we're really trying to, um, really trying to help folks reduce their energy costs. And their, um, and their footprint, um, their, you know, their uh. Carbon footprint, and so we're trying to get more people, um, more people involved, um, and I would love to. I'd love to have a, a nice uh council. Presentation there if we can, if we can do that, it's from. I think I'll, I'll be there early, I'll be there at eight, but it's from nine to three and certainly don't have to stay all day. Um, but just kind of to check it out and see what's happening.
And the date again?
It's October twenty-second.
Twenty-second, each Saturday.
Yes, it's a Saturday, yeah, and it's our first annual and it's not taxpayer funded, it's grant funded, so we're. Um, we're doing our best to make sure that it's free to the public. Um, and that people get information on, um. Solar insulation, um, windows, electric cars. Anything that people want information on and we're trying to get vendors so that can provide that and we've got an efficiency main. Will be there, so we've got workshops also planned for people to come and ask questions. Um, but we're not, it'll be the Greater Bangor area, it's not just Orno, so we're going out to BZ. Um, and Bangor's, but we also have door raises, so you know, we can get our.
I had a lot of talking about heat pumps, is it gonna be a representative there?
Heat pumps?
Yeah.
Yes, there's two, two representatives. So yes, if heat pumps, that's another, that's another thing, especially with heat in the summer because they'll also provide air conditioning. Something like that, so anyway, um, that was it, that's what, that was what we tried to do.
Any other? Committee of representative reports? I think we are all set.
I wish Jeff was here because I am curious about the community meetings, I'm curious if anyone who was there is able to gather quickly.
I was there too. Do you want to?
No, go ahead, Sophie, I was there as a resident.
Well, you're always wherever you go. Um, so, um, we did, we had the first two community meetings, um, just. General, come, talk, talk about town municipal services. Um, we had, um, I have this written down, not for today, but, um. Eight residents come, um, talked, um, if I. Enjoyed the fact that it was very low key, we ended up kind of ditching the, um. The format, um, and made a circle and sat around and chatted. Um, all of the senior team was there. Um, and, um, what we heard, uh, the people that came really appreciated their municipal services. Sidewalk clearing was among the top of the list, really enjoyed the deception that they got down at the town hall. Enjoyed, um, how easy it was to get ahold of people, we, um, really tried to pull what they weren't. Um, as happy with or what they thought we could change and. I think the thing that stood out was, uh, one of the attendees, a middle schooler, uh, really wanted to see a skate park, so we talked about skate parks and. The piece that I think was most valuable, um, was when we opened it up to what questions do you have about municipal services in general and we got. Answers, uh, we got questions about the recycling program and, um, it was very interesting and it took a while to. To, um, really end the answer around, um. How was, we chose the people that worked for the town and. Um, it kind of turned into a dialogue about town values and I mean, it was just a kind of a. It reminded me of the meetings that we have on a daily basis kind of with people who follow our office or want to chat with us. And also kind of a little bit like town meeting without any big decisions. Um, when we got done, um, well, and what was really interesting is they are, um, they were eight people. That, um, were not people that would normally. Come necessarily to things and, um, I thought that was great to see, um. So, um, our next meeting, um, a ninety-minute, um, Zoom setup for the twenty-ninth. Um, so there have been some questions about why are we holding community conversations and not zooming them and allowing for Zoom. Um, participation and. So the philosophy and if council has a different philosophy, we'll talk about it at a committee meeting, but in general, the philosophy is. If we are having a meeting that is about presenting information and maybe taking a question or two in an orderly fashion. Um, uh. Set up like this Zoom, I think makes perfect sense. Um, what we've really been trying to do, you know, council has, has indicated that one of their priorities for this year is around engagement. And I think engagement can be two things, it can be honest conversation back and forth to gain understanding and to be able to go in multiple directions and. For people to not feel put on the spot to do that. Um, and then sometimes it can be a little performative and I think, um, there's a point to that, it's not a bad thing, um. But I think sometimes when you try to blend the two, it drowns out the voices of people that aren't as comfortable. On camera and I don't think that's what we want to do, I think what we're trying to do is gain information, so. We're trying to offer two very different formats for, to entice people with different comfort levels. I think the plan is for the next round of discussions, um, to kick off some fire department strategic planning efforts. Um, and we would do those as well, one in-person, very low-key informal. Um, setting and one Zoom setting, you know, Zoom meeting, so we can do breakout groups. So that one is the twenty-ninth, I think it starts at six P M. The other meeting that we have scheduled and the advertisement just went out for is. The Zoom-only portion of the community facilities meeting. So we had that meeting before I left on vacation towards the end of August, um, I mean, sorry, end of July. Um, and that was very well attended, um, between thirty and forty people there. Um, heard very passionate discussion about what they think builds community and what spaces are important in the community. Um, and, um, you know, not drawing any clear, um. You know, conclusions at this point because we still have to hear from folks on the twenty-ninth, but. Um, one of the things that was very interesting is, um. The discussion that we've had in the past about, for example, space at Keith Anderson being unidentified. I think the space is identified, I think it is, the purpose is a broader category of community meeting space, um. And so, um. I didn't hear, we heard a little bit about community theater, um. As staff, we are engaging the school as stakeholders in a discussion about. Um, the Performing Arts Center, so one of the questions is, you know, can we rehab the Keith Anderson without having to spend as much money? To bring it up to, um, a performing arts, um, code, um, or a public. Um, place of public assembly as opposed to smaller venue, so. Uh, it has been really interesting, the, um, Boy Scouts came to that meeting in full force, in full regalia. I, it was, it was really cool to see and, uh. We got a commitment that we at the staff level had not been able to get, so the message that we had taken away as staff during conversations was that. The Boy Scouts couldn't spend any money, they really couldn't be invested in the upkeep of the building. What we heard from them or representatives from the Boy Scouts. Um, at this meeting was they could do fundraising and be invested, so, um, they are on our list, um, of stakeholders, so we will meet with them. Um, but you know, if. Given the fact that they, I mean, they haven't. Everybody, everybody is aware that they have a ninety-nine year lease, nobody can tell me exactly when it starts and there was nothing. Ever in writing, so, uh, we've gotta get something on the books, but at least I think it helped jumpstart a conversation. That otherwise was not really, um, going in that direction, so I don't know where council will ultimately end up with that, but. It's been a great conversation thus far, we've also been getting, uh, feedback, there are feedback forums on the front page of the website, you click and you can answer, we're getting a few of those. Um, after the twenty-ninth, we will, um, Haley Ward is gonna come back and give a presentation of the Community Development Committee. Council's Community Development Committee, um, and that is really gonna decide how we expend. The, um, resources for the last half of this consulting contract, so if council says we're really interested in this, that's kind of where we're gonna. Push based on the community feedback.
Sophie, were there any, um, notes or minutes taken at that meeting?
Yes.
And those accessible to us?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Um, I have a, um, a grid, but I don't think the grid will mean much to you until I get Megan and my notes. Put together, but.
In, in the meeting on the, the Zoom meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
The focus is on facilities, or the focus is on. What you like about services and don't like about.
No, the, the, the meeting on the twenty-ninth is around services, I'm sorry if I misspoke. The meeting on the twentieth is Zoom-only and that is the, the meeting of this, on facilities.
September twentieth?
September twentieth.
And also at six P M?
I believe so, but let me go real quick.
And while you're doing that, Sophie, can I add to that, um, the, the meeting, um, the services meeting that people showed up with. We had two folks who were brand new to Orno, so they. Work at the university, they, they're university employees, they work at the university and they have been for several years. Um, but one moved up from Augusta and one moved from Bangor and they, they showed up because they wanted to be part of the community, but, um, they had lots of. Good things to say so far, so trying to keep it that way, but I thought it was, it was interesting that they showed up and that they were. They wanted to say, you know, they, they had good things to say about, um. Our office downstairs, about registering to vote, just all kinds of things that they, that you have to do. As a new resident in the town and, um, many would agree.
Uh, Sophie could, um, would you possibly send an email out to us with those dates and times on it?
So I have a whole report that took precedence over the notes for council because it's been that long, I have lots to tell you. Um, and I will add that to it, but it's the twentieth at six P M. And, um, this, it, it is meeting format, um, the Zoom is accessible. Um, it's gonna look like an agenda like people are used to seeing, so if you click on. Um, the website, it will be right there for people to put them. No registration is required.
That's the, um, maybe you mentioned, uh, middle school or brought up skate park, was that the same middle schooler that emailed us a few months ago or was that a different?
No, no, it was a different. He's in sixty.
No. I've been hearing from a couple of other community makers about, um, skate park being a cool idea. I was actually surprised to see, I guess I just didn't realize that right now in our assigned reserves, we have, um, a bunch of donations.
About eighteen thousand dollars?
Yeah.
The, the key is going to be, um. Citing it, so we had talked about, um, upgrades to Markham Park, that would be a logical place to put something like that. Um, given the feedback we get about pump track, I think council would be, need to be prepared to hear some concerns about noise, um. And a skate park is gonna be louder than a pump track. Um, the other key there is eighteen thousand dollars, sounds like a lot of money, but when you're putting it together for a park that would. I mean, I think we want some quality to it, um, not just around safety, but quality so it will last and. That eighteen, I think would go very, very fast, so.
I've, I've, uh, heard from some people who I guess are more frequent skaters. Who are aware, I mean, I don't know anything about the funds that are available to something like this, but. I think there's like a Tony Hawk Foundation or something that will match funds or stuff like this.
So we had a Tony Hawk Foundation grant, so at one point for like fifteen hundred dollars. And we had to give it back, he just like cuts the check and sends it to you, but you have to. Expend it within a certain amount of time for the facility, so. What I, what I am envisioning is, uh, I think you're gonna have to look for private funds for this, I think there are other avenues for. People who want kids to have healthy, safe ways to be outside and, and have activity. Um, so I think there are private funds out there. I think council would have to agree to what it looks like, where it's gonna be in a general timeline. For us to be able to go out and get funds for it, we have had significant conversation with the University of Maine. Um, every so many years, they have a class that wants to raise money to put a skate park in. And what we had said, because, you know, we kind of have stalled at eighteen thousand for a long time. Um, what we said is, you know, if we can get a park on campus that campus is maintaining in a. In the fashion that we expect them to maintain all of their facilities. in the fashion that we expect them to maintain all of their facilities or are used to them, um, maintaining all of their facilities. We would look at giving them the eighteen thousand if Orono residents would be able to access the park on the same basis as students. So if students can flash their their card and go in, Orono residents should be able to vote. Um, and um, the university was very receptive to that, but I think the fundraising first kind of petered out.
Thank you. Anything else on to this item?
Would I ask Sophie, what do you, and this might be your manager's report. I don't see it on our agenda, but this, the status of the survey that went out in the Observer and it's at, are you getting responses?
We are getting responses.
All right.
On Survey Monkey and um, Hard Copy.
The Observer that was serving.
So I just have done a very, very quick scan, but I will tell you one thing, the Observer is beloved. Not that we were considering getting a little bit, but it was worth. Um, if it's all right, I, I've had an inquiry about wanting to know where we are with the property tax stabilization program. So this is the state program. Um, the applications were available at the beginning of September. We really put them on before that. Um, and are accepted right up through the beginning of December. Um, we um, have, we have received, this is for senior citizens. He's over the age of sixty five. Old homestead eligible property in the state of Maine for at least the last at least ten years. Doesn't have to be consecutive years, doesn't have to have a homestead exemption with it. There are some rules. We're getting ready to put out a postcard, um, probably towards the end of September, figuring that um, not everybody has heard about this, so we'll do postcards to taxpayers reminding them that they have until December to get the program in, uh, the application in. So this is an application that has to be received every year and it stabilizes your tax bill for the next year. So we've had some confusion. We've gotten a few calls from people who put their application in and their tax bill went up this year, and it's because it doesn't actually kick in until next year. Um, we've received a hundred and thirty four applications. We have not determined that eligibility at this point. But so we, we have a significant number of applications. Also, um, to let you know, to remind folks, tax bills got mailed August thirty first. They are, um, the first half of tax payments are due September, honored before September twenty second. Um, we committed um, a little over thirteen, thirteen point six million dollars for collection. We have received in essentially one week, uh, one point four million dollars. So where collections are coming in, which is good.
And the tax rate ended up being slightly less than anticipated.
So we had um, anticipated as part of our budget process, the mill rate going up by thirty eight cents. We had more value than we expected and both our homestead and bedding um, three reimbursements were higher, which get calculated during the commitment. So um, we went up uh, in total five cents. Um, the municipal contribution was significantly was less. We were about a hundred fourteen thousand, well, more than that, less.
Quick question on that rose application. They have to get them from the town of Orono. They can get it from the state.
Their state applications are right off the state's website.
Okay, but they have to turn them in here.
They have to turn them in here, and we're gonna be chasing people for their um, IDs because they have to be able to prove that they're who they say they are and for certain.
So I did pick up an application since I am in that category of senior citizens.
Yeah.
And I want everyone to know it is a very simple application, very easy to fill out. You don't have to dig for information. It's uh, it's very simple.
So I'm so glad that that works for residents. What we're learning on our side is that we do have to dig for information and so.
Better you than me.
Yes, we're hoping. So that is kind of a heads up to people that we may be calling them for more information because we're not sure that the information on the application really help, is enough for us to cover our bases.
So Sophie, it's a state application, but the municipality determines the eligibility?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so is that more staff time that has to be taken?
Considerable process. Not only for our applicants, but anybody who has applied in a different community that is listing Orono as a place that they're claiming any of their ten years of ownership of a house. And it's not just ownership of a house. It's ownership and primary residence in that house. So it's um, it's a great, the intent of the law is not a bad intent. The framework of the law really is putting a lot on municipalities um, upfront and then also to track it moving forward. So we essentially we're hoping our financial software that tracks tax payments
Hmm.
will create the internal mechanism to stabilize. It doesn't exist right now.
And the state's gonna fund that, right?
Yeah. So it's, it is again, not saying that it's a bad idea, right? But one of the things that we have seen as a general theme in the legislature are good ideas that are not necessarily well thought out and don't necessarily go through, you know, like there's consensus based rulemaking if you're doing D E P stuff or workers' comp stuff or some labor stuff with the Department of Labor. These projects, they don't go through a consensus based rulemaking, so they sound like a great idea. And then when they get put out there, you know, like our question is, how do we, how can I certify that that was somebody's primary residence if they weren't carrying a homestead, because you don't have to have a homestead. So then they're like, well, what about your voting records and what about your car registration records? And this is a whole rabbit's hole. Um, so, and right now the state is funding them. And we need to be able to have the, the documentation because I'm taking state funds. I need to be able to demonstrate that I can prove that they're eligible. So it's uh, not insurmountable. But when people call, when people submit their application today and call two days later to know if they are certified or not, they're all due in December, right? We're hoping to have mechanisms to be able to vet them. We're looking at probably the spring, April, May, before we can have a list of everybody.
Reimbursements from the states probably gonna be a whole other process.
They're supposed to come to us in January of the year after the tax.
But that's gonna add because this kid will turn sixty five. I mean, that would be an ongoing process.
Every year, every year, people have to
Right.
apply. My, but if somebody has applied the previous year and they've been deemed eligible, they're going to be deemed eligible every year after.
Right.
So at least we were, I think the first year is gonna be the heavy lifting.
Yeah.
And in a community like Orono where we have a significant number of our population who are over the age of sixty five.
Are we ready to move on to future agenda items or items of concern?
None.
Anybody have anything? Okay, then public petitions? We should, I don't think we have any public petitions, public comments. Have any public comments?
Hello, everyone. John Schuster.
Would you come up to the table, please, John?
Considering an hour, would you all rather give us on the agenda next time? I, I think we can ten, ten, fifteen minutes.
Would you rather put it on the agenda the next time?
Oh, let's try.
Great, thanks. Nice job.
The reason I, we've got me doing this is because I've already been taking care of the trail that runs along the river down on Dexter Broadway. And I'd already been taking care of the trail that runs down from the library, the community garden that runs down the railroad. Um, and then this year, I looked at the apple trees. Is there anyone now where the community garden is on this map?
Yeah.
Is there anybody that doesn't want to show you where it is? On the railroad side of the community garden, there's an orchard there. It's an old orchard. And it's not being taken care of. It's just brush around it and other invasive species and whatnot. And I thought, why don't I offer to take care of that with the help initially of the city to uh, prune and bush out around those first year because they need to be cut back the trees to quite a bit. And then the following years I could handle it with maybe borrowing some uh, a few pieces of equipment from public works that they have pruning type tools. Uh, but I'd be glad to do that because the only people, the only critters that are enjoying the fruit is the, the apples is the deer that can reach the lawn. I'm thinking these are, these are apples that are used for baking, cooking, that kind of thing. And uh, why not offer them up to the community every year? I could pick a lot as a community can be offered, it could be offered for them to come out and pick the apples. That was the little thing that got me startled. So I thought, well, we're gonna present this to the city. Why not explain that I've been doing the trails around the area too? So, um, if you already hit yourself around the treatment plant, you'll see a white line I put on there that's not dashed. That is taken care of by the city. They, they clear a path down through there. Every year, I think he goes through there maybe three times or four times during the summer. And I thought that, you know, that's really good because it allows people to go from Broadway area all the way around to the library. Well, nobody takes care of the trail on the other side or railroad to the left side. I do. Um, not so much recently. There's two dash lines on there. Um, the one to the left, it goes down to the pond is interesting because it has some of its own paths being developed this year. How? I don't know. And one is all the way down to the water recently. Who the heck made that path?
I'm gonna say deer.
Huh?
Deer.
Deer.
I also know a few people who walk down there myself, including, might just be creating, you know, a desire.
So one of, one of the paths that goes down there is the pond behind the library. Um, almost makes it to the water in the center of there, but not quite. If that area, if an area down there was cleared and you could put a bench in the summer, it would be really nice to attract people just to sit there. It'd be really nice. A bench that's not too heavy they could take out because it's going to float. The same with the other dash line that goes down to, it's actually part of the Bonosco. It's not a pond. And if they could move, part of the dash line, they, they could, as well as the one they're already doing. And since there's a hill there, it would have to be cleared by hand and I'd be willing to do that. And you could have put, you could put a bench down near the water off during the summer too. And I won't go over the items at the bottom. Item by item. Uh, unless you have questions on that. I wanted to coordinate some of this. The public works, they need your okay. I need your okay to store some of the tools. Probably best place to be the uh, the center behind the library, in one of those rooms, outbuildings. Um, I need a little bit of money for a few tools I would keep there that I would use. And I asked for help, and it doesn't have to come because people hate removing poison ivy, but there's about fifty feet of it on the river trail. It needs to be taken out because it's bad.
So it looks like the majority of this land is owned by Versant and Black Bear Hydro.
Who's a, who owns it?
Versant Power and Black Bear Hydro. I'm just looking at the tax man.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I don't know. It's been, the use of it has been used, but I'm explaining as far as caretaking of this. It's the one line is the city they know it. And the river trail, nobody's assigned to take care of it. The people use it.
Right. Yes, I'm just raising a question about
Liability.
Public funds for private, yeah, property.
But so, but I appreciate the sentiment toward volunteerism. I wonder if you've been in touch with the Orono Land Trust and other people who are working on these kinds of programs.
All right. So um, a couple of things. Um, the first is, it is great to have volunteers. That's, that is how we take care of all of our trails. Um, trails are really important in Orono to the point that um, we actually have a committee that oversees uh, and monitors all of the trails that are on town of Orono property. So we know that, as I think Rob alluded to, you have the trails that people go off the beaten path and we don't enforce unless there is um, a habitat issue or some kind of concern that what they're doing is endangering or impacting the environment. We, we don't enforce for deer or people, those wandering off of the paths. And sometimes you can get those paths that kind of get created over time. Um, the um, the path that you're looking at, the, the treatment plant um, maintains as part of our license and um, that is not maintained while the public, we have some members of the public that like to walk their dogs in there. That is uh, maintained. Um, it's not on our property. It is part of um, a license and an agreement that we've made. So um, the place to begin all of this, and I know that council's on T V, so it's seems like this is the right place to come. Um, but when we get into operations at this level, it's really important that we put that back through staff and the trails committee process because we have to determine what are the priorities? Do we own it? If we don't own it, it's actually illegal to invest um, taxpayer money unless we have right title or interest. Um, some of the places that we have invested in private property, we have licenses to do that. Council has determined that there is a public need for that. So um, I don't have the, I, this is the first I've seen this, so I can't give you um, kind of the the total response here, but I will say that um, if people wanna volunteer to maintain the trails that are um, parks and rent managers, absolutely the place to go to um, begin to be able to participate with that process. And I think you um, work with Mitch and Mitch can put you right in touch with.
Okay, and that, and this is dependent upon who's, who's presently doing something with the, with the existing path, like the path next to the treatment. That you say the city is not doing anything with that. It's not the city.
So W P C F is mowing part of what we are required to mow as part of our license. Um, the, um, and maintaining um, that hill area. Um, and again, not maintaining it for a lawn, but rather it's bush hogged, I think a couple of times a year. The important piece here is every time we look at trails, there is a whole process that goes in place of where we build trails, how we maintain trails. And we have a group of volunteers that are really dedicated to that. And if you're interested in being part of that, I think that that's And we have a group of volunteers that are really dedicated to that. And if you're interested in being part of that, I think that that's absolutely. Um a possibility. I just don't think town council is equipped to be able to make that happen for you. I think it needs to go back through the staff process. And connect with the trust.
That's dependent upon who owns the property too. Who owns the, who owns the property next to the river? Because part of that is being um cleared the first fifty feet of the path on the other side of Broadway. The other side of the treatment plant, the city is doing something that they are clearing. There's a bench down.
So. Because that's the part that's on town property.
So it is, it is an issue for who owns the property too. Also, the issue. Um our group that's maintaining or is interested in trails in this in the town. Um most of the trails, they're. Uh being functionally locked up to keep clear are the ones basically behind the high school in between there and the interstate. But we're all talking about, uh and I don't know if there's any interest there. That's why our group is, so. Yeah, I'm not sure where to get this.
If if you.
Maybe just keep doing this.
If you get in touch with Mitch, he can put you in touch with Megan and she can actually walk you through the whole trail system because. The town trail system is much bigger than just what's out.
Oh, yeah, I know that. But they, no one else has any interest in what I'm talking about right now.
Well, I think a big barrier is almost all of the land on the river all around Orano's privately. There are very small portions of town on land. There are some portions where we have agreements with property owners to have public trails that go through, but. The vast, vast majority of the land that's on the river is privately owned.
That's a sense of you can find out who owns those and figure out.
It is Black Bear Hydro and yeah, and Versant owns some of the inland pieces, but Hydro owns all of the part along the water because of the.
I do appreciate the idea of developing some of that. I walk a lot, a lot of the trails myself. I would love to see some. Some uh some work on that, whoever that gets them.
Okay. Well, the land behind the pond, the other libraries.
Um.
I don't know.
I.
I just walked in.
Yeah, I would have to go in and look. I I don't know how much we own in there.
Well, think about the orchard, the old orchard. Let me know what you think on that. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
The Webster family, very into orchard and I think the Marshes as well. On March had a big, like Webster Park used to be a big apple orchard and there were a lot of uh historic apple orchards in Orano. And cares.
Anything else under public comment? If not, so ready to adjourn. Sophie, did you have anything?
No, um I you will see a uh an agenda from out for next um meeting. That is gonna be a very packed agenda. You got um the Orano um Public Library Foundation that's coming to council. They came to council a while ago um to present the idea of fundraising for an expansion. Um council has changed dramatically um and the project has changed, so I've asked them to come back. Um and we also have some requests to sell town land and. Um I mean, it's a very, very full agenda. I will try to get you lots of information so that you can, we can move that forward. The only other thing, um we had initially thought we would look at the applications for. The um D E I mini, we've only had two applications come in, so we're gonna push that again. Um out this week and so we'll move that deadline ahead. I will be in touch with people to let them know. That that's probably gonna be October third um to see them. Just remember, we don't have a meeting on the twenty sixth. It's Marchishonum. Um so, yeah, that's all I have. And none on the eighth. Um it's indigenous peoples today.
Motion for adjournment.
So move.
As soon as I can.
Second.
All in favor.
This is the eighth trail.
Who are you going to start?
It's the tenth.
I was, I was like, that's not.